I've been here for thirty odd years. I was in Australia. I've seen these stores.
Many years ago.
Oh, I'm... Oh, you'll see each color. You'll be the one on them.
Yeah, the one in.
You're going to see them.
I do know. Because I...
At this time, we'll call a regular council meeting of Bridgeton City Council. Carter, and you'll stand and join in the pleasure. I'd like to introduce to the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with a living justice for all. Welcome.
Thank you. Here.
Here. Here. Here.
Thank you, Sheriff. Sheriff's for you. I just traded. I'm here.
We do have a forum. I'm a colleague of Ellen's over at PIP a week ago. We've been talking to her. Wish her the best right now. We do this for therapy of a story. The next item on your agenda is the agenda approval.
Second.
Well, motion in the second, or are there any changes to the agenda? First, I would like to indicate to council that there will be a need for an expected session. A lot of lights. I'll start with Mr. Fetch.
Yes, sir. I talked to Chief Crowe and he gathered some information on item thirteen. So I'd like to table item thirteen.
Well, motion in the second, table item thirteen. All in favor, item?
Aye.
Oh, does it carry?
That's all, sir. I ask.
Anything else, sir?
Yes, sir. That's all.
Uh, Mr. Brenner.
No number fifty-nine ninety is not ready yet. Uh, it's on our agenda, so I'd like to table that. What would that be?
Second.
That is item...
Item number six.
Well, motion in the second, table item six. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, does it carry? Anything else, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Um, Ms. Eaker. It was. I shut it off. It is. It's not on now. The right button is on. Okay. Move it on. This is, you can tell.
Yes, I have two things. Uh, one, I'd like to table item number ten.
We have a motion in the second, table item ten. All in favor, item?
Aye.
Oh, does it carry? Anything else?
Yes, the other, I'd like to add a discussion item about Pattonwood Youth Garden. Senior's Garden, is that it? And the senior's garden that we have been forward for Bridgeton. So, discussion item, Garden.
Uh, may I suggest item fourteen A?
Yeah, item fourteen A.
Well, a motion in the second, they had that item. And Mr. Brenner. All in favor of motion, do you think they can say aye?
Aye.
Oh, does it carry? Anything else, sir?
That's all.
Mr. Zinner?
Yes, I'd like to table item eleven. I'm listening to David and Barbara and wait.
Second.
Well, motion in the second, table item eleven. All in favor, item?
Aye.
Oh, does it carry? Are there other changes to the agenda? Seeing none, all in favor to adjourn this minute, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, does it carry? Uh, hey, it's great to be asking people in attendance. And that's, that's great. Uh, the public portion is the next item on the agenda. Since I see a lot of new faces, council has rules relative to the public portion. I would state those rules simply. One, there's a three-minute time limit. Two, there's no personal remarks. Three, there's no political comments. When you recognize, if you'll step to the podium, provide your name and address, and then express to council your comments. So with that, to open the public portion. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address council at this time? Anyone? Seeing none, we'll close the public portion. Move to the next item. Oh, I'm sorry. Please step forward. I didn't see your hand a minute ago. Please step to the podium.
I came here tonight because...
Your name and address.
My name, okay. Bernita Wilson, and I live on L. Farrell Court in Spanish Village. I am approximately one-fourth of a mile from the landfill. And so, the reason I'm here tonight is because of concerns with the landfill. Having gone to some meetings, which I know that the Eaker husband had. I don't know of other people who have been there. So I don't mean to not mention anybody. But, um, I'm glad to see that something's being looked at here regarding the landfill. Because I do have concerns about safety issues. Not just for the smell. The smell is a thing that keeps getting brought up. I know, three minutes. Um, but my concern is for what's under the ground that's being ignored, and the dangers that are there. And so I appreciate the city council looking into that, being aware of that, being certain, aware of our concerns for our safety, for the property value of our real estate, but more so for our safety. Uh, my husband walks two miles in the, in the air in the mornings there, and I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about, um, the subsurface smoldering event that's taking place. I'm so, I'm concerned about evacuation ideas for something like this fire comes up again. Um, I'm concerned about early, um, notification to the fire department and other people regarding any issues that come up. I'm concerned about our safety and welfare. And I'm glad to know that Bridgeton, that your council wants to be involved in that and, uh, not hiding under the rug anymore. If that's what's happened, I don't know. But, uh, we're becoming all more and more aware of it. And, um, I think that's a good thing. And I'm trembling, but it is a significant thing. And I'm glad that it's coming to the forefront. And I think something significant needs to be done. And I know it's going to take a while, but, um, it's been buried for a long time. It needs to, we need to look at that. Okay? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Others wishing to speak? Ma'am?
Hi, my name is Pauline Tark. I live at W. nine-eighty Haystack, Bridgeton, Missouri. And, you know, I have a lot of concern about, I don't live right on top of the landfill, but I can still smell it. You know, part of the house smells like it's on fire in the back sometimes, and then garbage in the front. And, you know, I had people work in my house after the tornado, and they told me, "Your house smells like garbage." Now, I'm really worried about the value of my house. I paid probably more than it was worth. I put like forty-five thousand dollars in rehab. And now, I couldn't give it away. Besides worrying about my health. And I've gone to many meetings. And I, I've never seen, I know we've been in the audience in the meetings I've been in, but I've never seen the, I saw the mayor, Mayor Ron Heisman, introduce himself at a meeting at Pattonville High School. But I did not see the Bridgeton people introduce themselves. They were just sitting in the audience. And it concerns me because you need to be concerned about my safety. And in all honesty, if I had known that I came here in two thousand, if I had known there was nuclear waste in the waste dump, I never would have gone to Bridgeton. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Others wishing to address council at this time? Yes, ma'am?
Alice Mack, thirteen Terrace On Drive, Bridgeton, Missouri. Smoke home park, so you know how close I am. I have relatives all over the United States that know about this situation, not from me, but from the news. It's been broadcast everywhere. It's not a secret. A lot of my relatives and friends elsewhere have said to me, "So what is your city doing about it? What stand are they taking?" The worst thing in the world for Bridgeton is not that landfill. People may not want to move into us, the Bridgeton, because of that, but they're sure not going to want to move into Bridgeton. If the city and the leaders of the city either say it doesn't exist or do nothing to show they care for the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address council? That's not going to happen. We want to hear your comments. We appreciate your comments. And let me assure you, Bridgeton cares very much. All these people up here, we care. We have lived here for years. We know the situation. There'll be no others.
Well, my name is Kurt D. Pepperton. And the comment you made to me doesn't seem like you care very much at all.
Please, no personal remarks. Now, let me assure you again, I care very much. I've lived in this city for fifty years. Please, sir.
My name's Scott Caneman. I'm at three-five-three-six Barter Street. I'm from a nearby neighbor. It's just over the river in St. Charles. Just without getting into a long story, uh, my family has a large history with the waste that ultimately ended up here in, in Bridgeton. He was a foreman at Malin Crop Chemical Company. He died at a young age, along with all of his colleagues, because of the Manhattan Project experimentation. He would come home with dust on his hands, and he'd play with his child, his seven-year-old child, who then also died. And then, uh, my mom had all kinds of pregnancy issues. My brother's tuba charity line shut down. So, I just want you guys to know that this is something that if we let fester and go, people are going to die. And I'm not saying you guys are, are responsible for that at all. You know, you guys have been very, from what I see, open to hearing comments, and that's appreciated. But this is nothing to mess around with. People will die. And that's all I'd say.
Thank you. Others wishing to address council? Please, please, let me recognize. Lloyd was up first, sir, if you will. Please.
Hello, my name's Lisa Ray. I live at one-hundred Cast and in the mobile home park. I'm scared to death. I really wish you could tell us what we're going to do sooner than later. I would like to know what we're going to do when we have to evacuate. We have no clue. This is too serious to let it go on any farther. Another day, another minute, another second. We need some answers now. I'm begging God, first of all, for everybody here, anybody and everybody. We are human. We need help. We need answers, and we need it now. Not tomorrow, not later tonight. We need it now. Yesterday, last week. Please understand, we are really needing something to happen immediately. It can't keep going on like this. I have nowhere to go. I have not enough income on social security to get out of Bridgeton. If I would have known two, five years ago, I wouldn't have lived here. My health has went downhill unbelievably. I just had lung diastasis and just cut open, you know, over all these things. I can't be assured that that's the landfill that caused all of my illnesses. But I'm very sick. I'm forty-nine years old, and this is just terrible. My animals are sick. Everybody, I've lost twenty friends in my mobile home park in the five years I've been there. This can't keep going. It really can't. So, that's what I have to say today.
Thank you. Sir, I think you were nice.
Thank you. Uh, my name is John James. I'm a James voice. But, uh, I moved here into Bridgeton at that trailer court they're talking about in nineteen sixty-two. And in nineteen seventy, I moved to Spanish Village. That's about the second or third house that was even there every time. And, uh, in the last seven years, I've come up with two different types of cancer. And, uh, I know about the smell. I know even way back when, when Mrs. Trump circled over from her husband, and then it went to the, uh, the diocese.
March Diocese.
And then it went to, I don't remember, went after that.
Allen.
But, uh, I've got few concerns. I'm not nearly, uh, usually the fault. Thank you.
Thank you. Others wishing to address council at this time? Anyone else? Please.
Yeah, my name's Steve Ross. I'm at eleven-six-twelve St. Charles Road, which you're familiar with, my neighbor. Um, I'm in the construction business, and when I was younger, I, I used to use that landfill. Um, it's been years and years. I've probably been using the Fred Lover landfill lately. But, um, my biggest concern is the report of, um, a previous employee at the landfill that is going on record to having witnessed a couple tractor trailers carrying toxic waste, driven down into the bottom of the landfill, and subsequently buried. Uh, I know there's storage that's there, that's protected. Why they put it next to the river, I don't know. But, um, I'm a little bit concerned about cover-ups, more so than I am about people not caring enough to handle the problem. I'm worried about dollars getting sent under the table. And I would hope that Bridgeton City Hall would keep a, a close eye on that, that, you know, things aren't getting shoved under the rug and really, you know, watching what's going on.
Thank you, sir. Others wishing to address council? See a couple of hands. You, sir, and ma'am? Please.
My name is Bob Idelman. I'm at forty-one-thirty-nine Main Court here in Bridgeton. We've been here for a long time, in the sixties. I think one of the things that comes up, I feel kind of naive about what everything is going on. But I think the only way to tackle this thing somewhat, maybe it's going on, is, this is a Bridgeton problem, but it's a Westlake problem. What are they doing? I don't know if I've seen any positive thing that says, "We're going to tackle and work this thing out with you and get this thing under control." I don't have that kind of confidence. I don't think anybody else does either. Maybe it's not going on, but hopefully it is.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Karen Nickel. I live in Maryland Heights. I'm not a resident of Bridgeton, but my livelihood is in Bridgeton. I grew up a few houses from Holbert Creek. Um, I have lupus. I've been very, very sick the past two years. Um, I want to save Bridgeton. Let's get that straight. I think everybody in this room loves Bridgeton. We fear for our lives here. We're scared. Sunday, we did not know when this fire occurred, what to do. There's no plan for us. We would really like for you to sign on to something that shows you support the Bridgeton community.
Others wishing to address council at this time? Anyone? With that, we'll close the public portion, and you'll hear from council later, I'm sure. But I would like to make just one comment. This table up here, we're all Bridgeton residents. We're all very concerned. I think everybody here recognizes Bridgeton has no jurisdiction, no control. But yet, we're very concerned. We've been in touch with the EPA. We've been in touch with the Missouri Department of Natural Resources. We are doing whatever we can, because believe me, all these people up here, and myself, we want to see a final solution. But we all have to recognize, whatever happens, that's not going to happen in the past. We appreciate your input. We appreciate your help. But we have to look to the EPA. They have to look, this is very important, the Natural Resources. They have websites. They have the information that's available. We have a website, and we have links to their websites. But we have to follow them closely, but we have to listen to what they're saying. And, uh, believe me, again, these people, myself, we have a sincere interest. With that, we'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of minutes from February fifth.
Ooh, second?
Well, motion in the second to approve the minutes from February fifth? Are there any corrections? Any corrections? Seeing none? All in favor of the minutes? They have presented. Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, does it carry? Next item on the agenda, as I indicated at the outset, we do have one council person this evening, and that has some significance in the fact that if any bill is introduced to the seating, it cannot be passed because it would require eight affirmative votes. So, you know, I don't think we're in that situation this evening, but just to let people know. Then, the next item on the agenda is appointments. I do have one appointment this evening. And it's a great, we have some volunteers in the city, and, uh, we have fourteen commissions. Mr. Jones, you served on one for your department. Yeah, okay, thank you. But in any event, I have one appointment this evening, and I nominate Emily Jacoby to serve on the Special Events Commission, representing Warren.
Uh, I live at Emily Jacoby. Do you approve of this, or, I mean, for the Special Events Commission?
Thank you.
Second?
Comments? Seeing none? All in favor of that appointment? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, does it carry? The next item on the agenda, two names are Elizabeth Monster, Ms. Eaker, and Mr. Fetch. Who is going to?
How can I read it?
Please.
Uh, Mr. Hines' name is also...
I'm looking at the agenda. Uh, there's two names. Please.
Right. This is written very small, so I'm trying to see it. I'd like to move for a resolution of mayor and city council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, to strongly urge the Republic of Bridgeton Landfill LLC immediately to leave Bridgeton Landfill LLC. I move it's for resolution fourteen, actually.
Okay. We have a motion. End of second, I'm sure. End of second. Please.
End of three. Whereas, an underground smoldering event in the Bridgeton landfill was discovered in October two thousand and ten and continues today. And whereas, it is the city's intent to provide a safe and healthy environment. And whereas, Republic has spent a period trying to remediate issues... Little print. With a little print. Resulting from the subsurface smoldering event, and owners still remaining nuisance to the residents, residents, businesses, eating establishments, Pattonville School District, and workers in the area. And whereas, voters have been experiencing outside boundaries of the city of Bridgeton. And whereas, continued nuisance odors may, may cause psychological damage to those living with the constant smell, and nearby residents may experience extensive health damage from the odors and possible toxins in the air. And whereas, Republic, although working to alleviate the nuisance, continues to push back the date for total remediation of the voters. Now, therefore, being resolved by the mayor and city council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, that Republic Services, owners of Bridgeton Landfill LLC, be strongly urged as follows. One, make every effort to extinguish the subsurface smoldering event immediately. Two, explore and implement additional ways to contain odors within the property line of the landfill, with an emphasis on immediate relief for the community. And work with the neighboring residents, businesses, and workers in the affected area to help restore their quality of life. And four, that Republic Services provide an update on their progress at every regularly scheduled city council meeting until this matter is fully resolved to the satisfaction of the Missouri Attorney General EPA and the Pattonville Bridgeton Fire Department. Five, that this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval. And I'd like to have a statement I'd like to make.
Please.
Okay. This resolution is for the people in my ward, other affected citizens of Bridgeton, for the restaurants and others who have lost some business, for the people who work in the area every day. I care about all of these people. Believe me, I know this is only part of the problem, that the radioactive waste is a larger problem. A resolution regarding moving the control of the radioactive waste to FUSRAP was to be on the agenda for the next meeting, but I'm going to wait until March nineteenth because one of our members will be out of town once we vote in favor of that. Mr. Fetch and I wrote the resolution and offered for others to make comments. I received several comments from council members and adapted changes into the resolution. It's way too late for us to come out with our initial support of the citizens. Who knew that the odor problems would keep occurring with weather problems and equipment malfunctions? I was told in April that this would be fixed by the end of summer. I do think Republic has worked on the problems, but things are just not working out for them. The excuses are becoming tedious and unacceptable. I've been told that a resolution will be airing in our dirty laundry in public. I think our dirty laundry and dirty air have been in the public for quite a while. Did anyone see the front page of today's Post? Have you listened to the news? Also, I know that we have no control over Republic. It seems that no one does, including the Attorney General, who doesn't want to define the company. I've been told that the people working to get the radioactive waste moved are radicals. I guess I'm a radical too. Trying to help people who are living with the odors every day must be a radical thought also. I feel for those of you who have endured so much suffering and anguish. Caring for people is our highest calling. Thank you.
Thank you. Others wishing to make comments? Anyone else? Mr. Brenner?
Well, I, I agree in principle with the resolution. I just have some problems, particularly with some of the wording in the resolution. Number one, the paint Bridgeton, the intensity of Bridgeton is, is kind of a, a terrible place to live. We're all aware that we have an issue. It's a tremendous issue. It's very, very serious. I think that, uh, it's surprised even probably Republic on how bad this thing has gotten. And I'd like to say, I guess, in their defense, they have put forth a tremendous effort. Uh, I reported to the council back in March of last year that, at that point, their, their expenditures were something like a hundred and seven million dollars. I was up on that landfill site yesterday. Um, that Brian Power, the environmental manager, their investment, from the point that I reported last time, is somewhere north of another fifty million dollars. Okay? Again, I gotta think that when anybody invests that type of money, they expect a result. And I think they're working for that result. I think that they're just as frustrated as a lot of people that, that they really haven't achieved or they're not really where they want to be, but I think they're going to get there. Yes, I, I know it may be not good news to hear, although we do have it more time. I'd like to point out that some of the odor releases, well, let's back up a little bit. I did receive a lot of comment from businesses last, particularly, let's say, in the middle of last summer. But as they, the Republic installed that vinyl liner and the cap and got more of the gas extraction wells in place, I noticed that from like September on, the calls and complaints and, and the issues, uh, the incidences of odor releases kind of went down. At least I was not getting the feedback that I did. So they were headed in the right direction. Now, one of the other things is, look at, look at the weather we have out there. Some of the worst weather we've had in the country is out there. They have a tremendous amount of machinery and things up there exposed to that weather. They're getting freeze-ups, they're getting pump failures and things like this, and things are happening up there. We know this. And unfortunately, there's not just a whole lot we can do about it. I feel for the workers that have to be up on top of that mountain, and it's zero, and the wind is blowing trying to keep that thing running. There are two huge systems. There's a gas extraction system up there. There's also a leachate collection system. The leachate discharge from that landfill is something like a hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day. And for some of you folks who don't know what leachate is, leachate is any groundwater that comes in contact with the trash and the material in that landfill. And to Republic's credit, they are putting in a, a system that can try to, to purify that leachate enough to where they can give it to MSD. Uh, the centerpiece is, is four one-million gallon tanks. And normally, a project, a project like that would be probably about a three-year project. They have fast-tracked it, and they're going to have it done within a year, or a little over a year. And that's, that'll probably be online early next year. So, they are putting forth a tremendous effort, a tremendous commitment to solve the problem. I'd like to give them a little bit of credit. I want to take the track of, of Chris Koster, our Attorney General. Again, you read the paper this morning. To Mr. Koster's credit... To Mr. Costner's credit, when that fire occurred Sunday morning, the next day, he came in town. And what he did was he met separately, first of all, with Republic Services, then he went over to the Pattonville Fire Department and had a separate meeting with them. And what he was trying to do was absolutely get both sides of the story and then figure out what the solution is. We know that as of March of last year, Mr. Costner instituted, or the Attorney General's office instituted, an ongoing lawsuit against Republic, and they have the ability to fine ten thousand dollars a day for not achieving either goals in odor reduction or heat reduction of the fire. To date, no fines have been filed. And after that incident, Mr. Costner read this comment, and I'm gonna read this as a quote. "We've got a situation, an emergency, we are dealing with that that's very difficult. If we thought that finding Republic at this junction would improve the situation, we would do that." Okay? I think what Mr. Costner is trying to do is bring the Pattonville Fire Department and the authorities and Republic closer together. If you read further in the article this morning, one of the things that's gonna happen is that the Pattonville Fire Department is going to institute a plan of onsite training with Republic, and of course, the landfills are being moved. And out of that is probably gonna come a better plan for any emergency that would come up, including, and God forbid, if there was any type of evacuation necessary. And by the way, there is an emergency action plan. I saw that plan personally with Republic. They brought out a file, and they have a little section right there under graphic flowchart there, small subsurface fire contact, right on the line on how it's done. These are extremely professional people up there. They're not dealing with a bunch of people just running around randomly. They're highly skilled, even with a dedicated approach. I think that this problem is challenging them as any, and I've seen that in a lot of professionals, when they come in and have a problem like that, they are challenged, they wanna solve. And fortunately, this company has both the intent and the resources, and that's probably very important, because if we were dealing with a smaller company, I can tell you what, they might just throw up their hands, walk away from that landfill and say, here, cheers, go ahead, take it. And you say, well, great, the government won't have got. Well, let me tell you, folks, the government doesn't have a lot of money anymore, at least the state of Missouri doesn't. We're seeing that every day. So fortunately, we've got a company up there that has the intent and the resources to try to deal with the problem, and I think they put a lot of effort into this. I think what this resolution does is, number one, paints Bridgeton as a bad place to live. Now, I'm gonna talk about that with it. Number two, centers Republic. Okay, you know, that's the approach we want to take. I have a little problem with that. Specifically, I have some problems with some of the wording, and there are six wheresses in there, and I'll be specific, wheress, the continued nuisance odors and they cause psychological damage to those living with the constant smell, and the constant smell. And nearby residents may experience extensive health damage and odors and possible toxins in the air. There is nothing, there is nothing in writing that substantiates that. It's one thing to have a personal opinion, it's another thing when a governmental body comes on and puts this in writing and says, this is what we believe. And, you know, there's, we could probably argue it either way, but never, and all the monitoring that's been done has any of the levels been exceeded. That's a little comfort to people that are sick or that experience that, but that's what's in writing, that's what the EPA, that's what the Missouri Department of Natural Health, that is monitoring the situation, that has your monitors right, that's what they're telling us. If that was different, I'd be right behind you, but it isn't. And, you know, therefore, I have a little problem with the city coming along and putting our force behind that. And the other thing is that, again, condemn Republic, you know, wanting them to report to us, the city, there's a conference call that occurs every week where they're in touch with our city authorities. They have an excellent website. Anybody wants to see what they're doing, www.bridgetonlandfill.com. You can go on that site, one of the most interesting things is look at their FAQs. You know, basically, what it is, is they go down and talk about what everything is, what a subsurface smoldering event is, what's going on in the landfill, the gas extraction system, their approaches, everything is all right there to see. You could spend hours on that site. All the air sample reports, although I will mention this, they are always behind, they're usually a month or two behind, which is not very comforting. But the fact is, I think that they've done a lot to become transparent. I think that centering them, and calling Bridgeton a bad place to live, saying that you breathe the air in this town, that your life will become psychologically damaged, or your life is threatened, is a little extreme. So I have some problems with that area. And again, this is no disrespect or anything to anybody up on this council, we're all here for the same reason, we have the welfare of the city and the best interests of the city at heart. But I just have a little problem with that. That's all, is the difference between.
Thank you. Now, for the audience, so you heard from the two council members, four and two, where the landfills are located. Mr. Fett.
Thank you. Couple weeks ago, Ms. Eker, Council President Eker, said she was going to prepare an argument for the Westlake portion of the landfill, the Dr. Quay site. And I called her after the meeting was over and asked her if I could participate in gathering data with her, and she acknowledged okay. And when we sat down and started doing that, we decided that, well, maybe the people that are smelling this odor, they have a concern also, maybe we ought to prepare a resolution for them also. So that's how her and I got started in this. And over the past few days, since the resolution has been on the agenda, I've received a couple of calls from people telling me that they thought that if this resolution was going to give our city a bad image. Well, I disagree with them. I support this resolution, and I did help Glenn to write it. And in my opinion, there is nothing in this resolution that isn't true, and it gives our city a bad image. We already got a bad image with these smells that have been coming out on TV. We need to do something to fix it. In fact, back in December twenty thirteen, just a couple months ago, the Planning and Zoning Commission of Bridgeton presented to the city council, which is their sole duty, a update of our comprehensive plan, comprehensive plan, of the city of Bridgeton. And I read this plan, because the council, as far as I know, read the entire, or approved it unanimously. And on page thirty-six, item twelve of the Bridgeton Comprehensive Plan Update, it says, "The landfill, it's time to address the problems caused by the landfill, implement a solution to this smell, toxic waste, and end the negative publicity to our area. It impacts us all. Home values," and in parentheses, it says, "who is going to buy a home here, quality of life and pride, and our pride is being compromised." That's it, our comprehensive plan, the planning and zoning just prepared, and we accept it. So that's what we're doing here tonight. We're presenting a beginning for you. Hopefully, more comes about. As I said in my statement there, that I don't feel this is hurting our image. The wheresses of this resolution are true of the past history of the odors causing a nuisance to our residents, businesses, and outdoor activities held in the city and in the surrounding areas. In the resolve portion of the resolution, we ask Republic to explore additional ways to control the odors and to attend our city council meetings and provide us with updates of the progress that they have. This would give us, the city council and your representative, an opportunity to ask questions and hopefully get answers from them. I'm in favor of the resolution. I'm gonna vote for it. I hope that Glenn and I can come in with another resolution in a week or two when Mrs. Abrams gets back for the toxic waste. I also wanna like to thank the Attorney General for his interest. I'd like to thank the EPA, Bridgeton Fire Department, and all the committees that are working in our neighbor, neighboring communities. Thank them for their involvement on this odor that's affecting all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hines.
Thank you. I too will be supporting the resolution. It's a shame, Mr. Grimmer, you had to go to Republic and ask questions and have them give you information. Why can't they come to us and bring it to us? Why couldn't they be here tonight? Why couldn't they have spoke, you know, during the public portion for their three minutes? It almost sounded like you were speaking for them tonight.
Please, please, we want to hear from everyone, but we're not gonna have participation. And let's not add personal comments relative to other council members, or I'm gonna give them the opportunity to respond immediately.
Like you said, they were behind two months on some reports. They've been behind all along. They withheld information from us. We find out, you know, just by chance, certain things. And I'm definitely behind this resolution. I want them to, I don't ever see the problem being solved, but that money aside, it doesn't matter, a hundred and fifty million, a hundred and fifty billion, it's not the money. We need an unresolved to this problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Morris.
Thank you. I could have some more of a commentary. The Bridgeton, Republic landfill. This has been a journey lasting years searching for truth, justice, and the American way. Truth, probably we could not handle the truth. Republic knows the toxic material that is melting and burning below the surface, benzene, chloride, dioxin, carbon monoxide, anything ending with an end or an een is not so good for the environment. St. Louis County is state quiet. State Department of Natural Resources is monitoring air quality, reporting no health risk. The federal EPA, everything is fine. Justice. After years of frustrating complaints regarding the nausea, the odor, a citizen's effort and the media reporting brought engineers, bulldozers, stalling pumps, and a protection tarp to solve the problem. Except in cold weather, the pumps freeze. Wonder about the hot weather. Seems it may work only if the weather is just fine. Give them more time, you say. How much more time? Six months? A year? Two years? This has been going on for more than four years. You talk about the money. Republic has total assets of over nineteen billion dollars on record from two thousand and thirteen. Republic has a total revenue of over eight billion on record for two thousand and thirteen. Republic operates two hundred and seventeen recycling plants, four hundred and two landfills, six hundred and twelve transfer stations, eight hundred and forty collection agencies. Republic handles more than half of all garbage collected in the United States. Garbage is money, a lot of money. My point is that Republic is in the business of waste, they have experience and knowledge of waste. This landfill should be something they are familiar with, this type of waste, to clean up in a more timely manner. The American way, or the American dream of owning a home. Your home should be your refuge, not a prison. Residents of Spanish Village and Terrasone Trailer Park live in the shadows of this landfill every day. I do have a testimonial from a resident and a friend living in Spanish Village. My husband walks two miles around the neighborhood most mornings. I have discovered that his smellor isn't working quite so well. Maybe that's a blessing, because I've noticed the odor when he says he can't smell anything. Other times, he will notice it. I'm hoping his walking around the neighborhood will not impact his health in a negative way. For many months, the smell hasn't been as bad as it was a couple years ago. I notice the smell only in the late evenings or during the night when I let my dogs out. I'm assuming that's because the air is heavier at that time. I almost forgotten how the smell was until last month, when the equipment malfunctioned. In good weather, we rarely have windows open, especially later in the day, because of smell getting into the house. It used to be really unbearable, and you could forget having any company, for fear that day that came would be awful smelling day. As it is, our son-in-law was afraid to drink the water when he visited from out of town. Our granddaughter was playing in the snow and afraid she would eat the snow. It was a concern for us. It is an ever-present concern for us whether there is a smell or not, and wonder about our health, about our real estate, and our overall future. And she thanked me for imploring. In conclusion, business located in Bridgeton represent our city. The city's citizens come to city government with their concerns and complaints, expecting us to solve the problems. Some corporations do not respect their neighbors and do not take responsibility for their business activities. This resolution will do nothing to force Republic to fix the landfill. Bridgeton has no legal authority. I'm supporting this resolution for all the citizens of Bridgeton. This landfill is causing a negative impact on our community. Our reputation has suffered in the media. Our residents are frustrated, worn out, and just want the problem solved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Settle.
Yes, I have a few comments I want to start off with. First of all, I'd like to not ask any questions about the, they say, there are really lots of people here from the city of Bridgeton. Can I see a raise of hands, how many people from Ward one?
Let's, hey, let's not, Mr. Settle, follow your own rules. This is not a council, audience interaction. Make your comments.
On behalf of all the citizens of Bridgeton, it shouldn't just be a certain area of the city of Bridgeton that's Ward two, three, or four, but it should also include Ward one. I mean, there's two councilmen here that are from Ward one, and I don't think, I don't recognize anybody here from Ward one tonight. Sorry if I didn't recognize who you are. That's by a right hand. I also want to speak and help for the councilman, a member that's not here tonight. I've been a close friend of the name of her, very, over fifty years. Lived in this community since I was three years old, which is fifty-five years old, fifty-five years. She, like myself, also would like to support this resolution, but we'd like to see some changes in this resolution. I'd like to see a resolution that all in this would actually respect. So you could be able to walk up to any one of your councilmembers and say, you know what, we stuck together. And so, like my councilman, your Grimmer, brought up, you know, with the wheress number five, I think that ought to be eliminated. So the councilman, Barb Abrams, mentioned, called me this afternoon on the telephone. This is ridiculous to talk about something that's about psychological damage or may experience extensive health damage. You don't have a doctor's group for that. Why are we adopting something that has no legal bounds into a resolution? So that is something I'd like to make an amendment to change and eliminate that section, and I think most of us would probably follow that. The other issue was like, line number four, it says, we'll provide updates and progress every regular scheduled city council meeting, like Councilman Grimmer mentioned. We already get updates right now. What I would rather just say is we'll continue weekly updates to our cities. Okay? That's what they're doing right now, and they keep this section until this matter has been resolved, is satisfied, Missouri consultants, et cetera. But I think we need to make sure they continue with the response that they do right now in the other meetings with our city administrator and hosting on our website. We as a council, we regularly update emails. I got an email from Republic early Sunday morning about the fire, and then you hit up an email from our city administrator for six o'clock in the evening about the issue. I mean, that's how much it was a delay there sometimes from this administration, not to pick on our city administrator, he was probably wearing his head down. He didn't go to the after dark and came back and sent emails. But it was nice to see Republic out there in the early morning, he sent us an email. I actually learned about it already on Facebook, because I had people, you know, emailing me and stuff on Facebook early Sunday morning, showing pictures of the fire. So do most of the people in the audience that are a member of Facebook and see what's going on. Later on, we saw it on the TV on Sunday. And that was a very small fire, and I admit, probably everybody says, you know, that was the ghost, we kind of just woke this up, didn't we? That could have been a very major, major event. I think we, not only as the fire district and Republic needs to know the emergency process, why do you think all the citizens of Bridgeton should know? I think at least- I think at least a way should be notified on our website that says, you know, here, link on this, see what you're doing in the works. We don't, we don't even know what they do in our department, it's our city. We don't even know who we call. We didn't even know how to drive to get to the city hall when it was too far away to come here. Those are things we need some better communication on our website. That's the best, we might use power, but you can still use your laptop, you can go to a neighbors that has a generator, you can go to the library that maybe has a generator. Our new community center, we'll have a house generator. The city hall, on this side of the city, you will, if it does have a generator, you know, it didn't work on the website. That's kind of strange, you have a backup generator, it didn't work to keep our website up. So before I move the table, it's because we don't have a vote of interest. I would like to see if you could actually make an amendment. Our attorney in our last meeting said we could make changes to this resolution. No, he brought that up. I would like to make an amendment, two of them. One of them first, I would be to eliminate the whereas number five.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second to eliminate the fifth statement under the whereas. The fifth one, okay, read it for me, sir.
It currently says, whereas a continued nuisance odor may cause psychological damage to those living with a constant smell and nearby residents may experience extensive health damage from the odors and possible toxins in the air.
Okay, so we have the motion and a second to delete that section. Okay, now I have lights, so we discuss the amendment and vote on it. So I can't look at the lights, but anybody who wants to speak to the amendment, please raise their hand. Mr. Fetch.
I'm in favor of the amendment. I think that we heard from people tonight that they're getting sick. We don't know what they're getting sick from. That's the point of it. How many of us that are sitting here tonight, every morning wake up and look out the front door or out through the curtains right now to see if there's snow outside? I've been, yeah, I've been doing that too. Every, probably all of us have been doing that. So is there snow? We don't know, we're just looking. These people got to get up out of bed every morning and open up the front door, open up the window, to see if they smell anything before they go outside. I think that this is a possibility. I think that's what I'm calling psychological. That's the part that worries me about, for these people. So basically, I'm opposed to it and would hope that we don't take it out.
Okay. Others wishing to comment on the wording on the plate, Miss Eaker.
Yes, and originally, this part of the resolution was stated more matter-of-actly. It was will cause, very, very specifically, and Mr. Grimmer's suggestion that he didn't like it, I changed it to may cause. May. May cause psychological damage. May cause health damage. May. We can argue over the word may. Now, I did that in his recommendation, and I think it's much more acceptable, because no, I don't have the facts in front of me. The facts I have in front of me are people that are sitting out here telling me things about their lives. And as I said, I care about the people that are sitting here. Thank you.
Thank you. Others on the amendment, Mr. Grimmer.
Again, and I appreciate the changes, and after I've read this thing, basically, what it says, if you live here in the city of Bridgestone and breathe the air, you might have some psychological problems, and you might have some, some health issues, serious health issues. I just can't say that about our city. I just cannot, I can't do this, I can't handle this. I think Mr. Satell is entirely correct in the approach. A scenario, let's just think about this. If you pass a resolution with this type of wording, let me give you a scenario here. Knock, knock. Oh, hi, Mrs. Virgin resident. I'm for ground improvement. Did you know that your city says that if you live here and breathe the air, that possibly you could be subject to psychological damage, even if, like, you may have all these patients in here? You may have some serious health issues. How are you feeling today? How's everybody in your family? Oh, we're good, maybe we can help each other. Okay, that's the kind of thing that we could open up here. I just have a problem with that. You know, I'm all for the love there for the city. Anything we can do, I happen to believe that the way to solve a problem is to find the people that actually can make a difference, the decision-makers. You contact those people, you let them know what's the problem, we have a issue, a serious problem. You know, sitting here and condemning somebody, I happen to believe that Republic is part of the, part of the solution, not part of the problem, part of the solution to the problem. And that's why I go up there, take the time, rather than them come to us and explain what, I'll go up there, I'll take the time to go up there and look around and see what's going on, talk to those people, figure out, let them know how you're feeling, what's going on with the community. That's the way I think we'd get things done. I agree with the spirit here, I'd like to take something, I wish we had more power in this thing, but again, let's at least clean this thing up to where it's acceptable, I agree with Mr. Satell, that we have to have something that we can agree on, so if we're going to have a resolution, let's get it to where we can agree on.
Thank you. Others wishing to speak to the amendment. Mrs. Norris, your light is on, do you want to speak to the amendment, please?
You know, number two, it is the city's intent to provide a safe and healthy environment. I believe that is repeating number five. So I believe number two is taking care of the safety and health environment of the city. So I think it is a necessary number five.
Thank you. Others wishing to speak, please, Miss Eaker.
Yes, my, my question here is, if you change this, will Mr. Grimmer support the amendment? Can you, they call me out of order for saying that.
Yeah, you're not going to take a vote this time. Please, we'll have a vote.
Well, I'm just waiting, I'm not.
Other comments on the amendment which moves the lead of the fifth whereas? Any other comments, raise your hand, please, please, Mr. Grimmer.
I forgot to mention, I had, one of the conversations I had today was with Mr., our Assistant Chief, Matt Verbanchi, and I guess some of you know him, and again, I cannot say enough about one of the comforting things about how the Bridgestone Fire Department has responded and handled the situation. I can sleep better at night knowing those guys are on the job, because they are the first line of contact. There was, and some, you know, a mess-up between the Republic and, and Mr. Verbanchi of the Fire Department. That made me feel good, because that, that told me that Matt was answering, asking the tough questions, he was sending a face up there, I want information, I went, now, I went, now, accurate information, not stuff that's two or three weeks old. Guy was doing his job, and they were solid. I respect that a whole lot. Again, in the conversations I had with Mr. Verbanchi, and I asked him about this, and again, this issue right here, exactly what I said, was that this is unsubstantiated, you cannot, they have an opinion, it's one thing, but as a government body, when you make a statement like this, you're putting your weight and force behind that. That becomes more than just an opinion, that you're making a statement that, there is nothing to back this up, nothing to substantiate this.
Other comments on the proposed amendment, Mr. Fetch.
Well, I looked at this again, and Jared Lee, you spoke with Linda about changing it, and I thought that was good. I mean, I, I thought that this, all the changes that were necessary were made before tonight, we got out of here tonight. And it's surprising to me, after we hear these people, that we can't leave both of these whereas's in there. I mean, this has nothing to do, it says may, and it also has not saying anything about that takes the image of the city in bad light, because it, it's talking about an odor that's going to cause these things, not the city of Bridgestone. Thank you.
Other comments on the proposed amendment. See, none, all in favor of the amendment? Please indicate by saying aye.
Well, aye.
Let's take a voice amendment first, please.
Okay.
All in favor of aye?
Aye.
All ayes. Roll call.
Thank you.
Mr. Hine?
Nay.
Mrs. Norris?
Aye.
Mr. Satell?
Aye.
Mr. Zimmer?
Aye.
Mrs.?
Miss Eaker? I'm putting nay to keep this, so the start stays in.
Mr. Fetch?
Nay.
Mr. Grimmer?
Aye.
Four ayes, three nays. So this is understood, any significant vote by this council requires a majority of council members, there's eight, this would require five votes, therefore it fails. Back to the resolution as unamended, Mr. Satell, you have...
Yes, I had another item number on number, line number four, but since it didn't happen, because we didn't have our eighth council member here, I moved the table list to the next meeting and proceed here.
Just the motion to table, that takes precedent. Is there a second to the motion to table?
To table as amended or...
No, to table, the resolution, that is your motion.
Motion to table the resolution.
Okay, we have a motion to table the resolution, is there a second?
Second, sir.
Okay, a tabling motion is non-debatable. All in favor of tabling, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All ayes.
Nay.
Roll call.
Mrs. Norris? Mr. Satell?
Nay.
Mr. Zimmer?
Well, wait, that is your motion, sir. Let's back up a minute. Let's back up a minute. We have a motion to table, aye by Mr. Satell, and I vote is to table.
My vote is to table, aye.
Yes, thank you, sir. We're going to start over, because we want to be accurate, for nothing else, we all have different opinions, nothing wrong, let's help, we want to be accurate, please.
Mrs. Norris, nay. Mr. Satell?
Aye.
Mr. Zimmer?
Aye.
Mrs., Miss Eaker?
Nay.
Mr. Fetch?
Nay.
Mr. Grimmer?
Aye.
Mr. Hine?
Nay.
Four nays, three ayes, the motion fails. We're back to discussing the resolution. Any further comments at this time, Mr. Satell?
Comments is protocol, means we can't pass it our way or enact, because we can only get a word from you?
Well, hey, we don't, no, no, they, no, just continue. As I indicated earlier, any significant vote by this council would require five votes, positive votes. Okay, please.
I have a point of objection.
Let Mr. Satell, as, as a point of order.
A point of order.
Please.
I'm sorry, I didn't say that. In regards to, I believe Mr. Satell said something about, we aren't all eight here, we can't vote on this the first night. May I have an opinion on that?
No, no, no.
That's not the same for resolutions.
No, it's not. What, when eight votes for pardon us to pass the first meeting, the resolution makes no difference. Please, Mr. Satell.
I will continue then, I would like to amend line item four, the bottom, it says, that Republic services, and then I want to see a change, it says, we'll continue weekly updates to the city.
Second.
And then continue until this matter is fully resolved to satisfaction, Missouri Attorney General, EPA, and the Pathevison Fire Department.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to change the fourth whereas, read it again, so we make sure.
Starting with that Republic services, and then I want to change it, we'll continue weekly updates to the city, and then go back to there until this matter is fully resolved to satisfaction, Missouri Attorney General, EPA, and the Pathevison Fire Department.
That is your motion.
That's my motion.
Discussion?
Yes. The way this is written, I don't want to see Republic government wasting fifteen, twenty, thirty minutes every council meeting. This might take years to resolve, maybe credit is resolved before the sun. Because this would make it, them almost being obliged to be here every meeting, you know, you know how much that's going to ramble on, if they're here, you're all there every meeting too. It's going to take a lot, I mean, not negative, I think that's positive for our citizens to be here. But we already get these updates right now, and they, they bring all the information to our city administrator weekly, not, I do, or when we have a council meeting, just twice a month. So this is actually making it where they actually got to give us information less often, you know, right? Now we get it weekly, I don't make it twice a month. That's all.
That's your motion. Okay, I got a lot of lights, discussion, raise your hand on the amendment. And I would like to point out, is everybody here ready tonight? Do you want to tell Republic to be here every meeting? They might not, it's their choice. Okay, let's continue. Mr. Grimmer, are you on the amendment, sir?
Yes, sir, I, I, again, as Mr. Satell points out, that, that would be a waste of council's time, a waste of, of everybody's time. Again, they have a very, very, I think, managed website where that information is readily available. If anybody cares, you know, talk to me, I can pitch them up, there's people out there that are, you know, probably coming out right there. So, again, calling them up there, or even asking them, or requesting them to show up, a waste of time.
Miss Eaker?
Yeah, actually, I have no problem with that, because actually, I didn't write that part. We were giving some information that might be a good thing to put in there, so it's a requirement that, that was taken out. That's kind of the meat of it, anyway.
Mr. Fetch, are you on the amendment, sir?
Yes, sir. Yeah, well, I was wanting to see what Mrs. Eaker had to say about it, and I'll go along with that, but also, I thought it was a good thing to be in there, because I know everybody's sticking up over there on that side for the, for Republic, that they're not going to be here. I'd like to prove you wrong, or prove you right, by making them get up off of their duff, and at least have to make a decision whether they wanted to come down here and give us some advice on what they're doing to stop our smell that's sticking up our neighborhood as well as the neighborhood, and then our neighboring communities. I would like to see them tell us, no, we're not coming down. We just gave them the three-year contract to redo our, our, our trash hauling, they're good trash haulers. But why are we worried about putting them to an inconvenience? Thank you.
Mr. Hine?
I echo Mr. Fetch's thoughts. They were here when they wanted us to renew their trash contract, they're not here tonight. Thank you.
Mrs. Norris, are you on the amendment?
I'm not.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Satell, are you on the amendment, sir? Any other discussion on the amendment? Anybody else raise your hand, Mr. Satell. Mr. Grimmer?
A question was asked, if I can support this amendment, again, I'm still uncomfortable with some of the order, because I think it just casts a negative light on the city. The comment was made, you know, more comprehensive plan, not in the negative publicity, it just continues that, in the spirit of compromise, I would be willing to support this resolution if we remove the whereas number five and remove this requirement that Republic comes before us every meeting to make a report that the information is already available from other sources.
Other discussion on the amendment? Any further discussion? I see light. Anybody else on the amendment, raise your hand, Mr. Satell.
Yeah, I thought you had a good, good point where they can come and tell us what's going on, but they do give us a lot of information already, so, sorry. When, it made me start thinking, because I recommended four being gone before by, or our jury said it to me, that was one of my recommendations, was to take that force out, so we didn't have to come here, because we're already getting that information. I guess I can go either way on that, on that, I'm not as, I don't, I can go either way. It's, I'm rather not see them here, because we, we do get operational, I get emails daily from, or posted daily, and I'm, I'm, the citizens, a lot of emails, and, and emails, so, that's, that's my, I see your...
Further discussion on the amendment, on the amendment, sir?
Yeah, wait till I know what you said, Scott. I've said many times here at this council, I'm not a computer guy. I hate it. You know, I got to have my grandkids come over and teach me how to use things and do things. So I hate that thing. So that I don't have the, and I, I'm not scared to admit it, the ability to get a dialogue with Republic on, on the internet. I would rather have them right here where I can talk to them. Thank you. Just a copy of that.
Okay, other discussion on the amendment, please.
You know, Paul, for I have no disagreement unless invited to be, let's give them a notice and say, okay, when they do some kind of evacuation plan, come here and explain to us. You know, give them a long notice, okay, let's come here next month when, when our, our chief of police and administrator, you know, title it in the fire department, says this is the plan we want to get out to the public. Come here and explain it, and let's hear your point of view on it, too. Or what, before we plan on it, what were they, they're the info from the city, what we like, maybe the citizens, they have to, too. Maybe there is a new separate kind of sire now, too, it's different from the other kind Maybe there is a, a new several kind of sire or not, it's different from the other kind of sires. I don't know what the answer is. That's all.
Anyone else on the amendment? Please, Mr. Brimmer.
We changed the wording to, uh, set a regulatory, requested scheduled meetings. We got a little, they'll do... Okay. What I'm saying is maybe we can change the wording, say, RS requested to meet with us, something of that.
Okay, we have the amendment, which is not the delete for, but it's the modify. Do you want to change the word?
Yeah.
Do you want to work out a friendly amendment with the sponsor?
Right.
Uh, while they're doing that, if I don't get the chance later, I really appreciate the audience. I appreciate the professionalism. It's a big problem. It's a, it's a need to really address it. You got it resolved?
Yeah.
Okay, now, this is a friendly amendment, replace it with your amendment. So, read it, sir.
Republic services will continue weekly updates to the city. Except for regularly requested. Except for requested, you know...
And provided.
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 Updates.
Updates.
First, uh, personal updates.
Personal updates.
Personal updates. Until this matters, then...
At council, as requested.
And then the continuation of everything else, until this matters will be resolved.
Hey, the city clerk still doesn't have it. So, no, let, let, Mrs. Satell, it's your amendment. You're working on a friendly one, just modify it so we don't have to handle it with two votes, please.
Again, first, our Republic services will continue weekly updates to the city. I don't want to stop that. Okay. You know, and...
As requested.
As, as, as requested. And as requested, appearance needs the council. Until this matters will resolve to satisfaction with the Attorney General, EPA, and the Pathevish Fire Department.
Yeah. Okay, that's the amendment. Who seconded that original amendment? You're in agreement in every, okay, any discussion?
I said, well, I said, I'm gonna say.
Okay, okay, any discussion on this amendment?
Mayor, please read it back.
Well, let the clerk read it. Make sure this is what the law recommends, please.
That Republic services will continue, continue weekly updates to the city except for requested, except as requested for various meetings of council. That's right.
That's professional. That's not right. And provide updates as requested by council. That's reasonable.
Ask attorney to lead the way.
Uh, and then, he, the attorney can help you with, he's not gonna give you a legal opinion, it's just like, but he can help you with the wording based on what we think you're trying to accomplish. Is that okay? Please, let him roll it.
Uh, that Republic services will continue weekly updates to the city and as requested appear at meetings of the city council to update as to their progress until this matter is fully resolved to satisfaction with the Attorney General, EPA, and the Pathevish Fire Department.
Is that true?
That's exactly what we said, yes.
That's exactly what you said.
Sorry.
So, all councils agrees on this. We know we don't agree on a lot, you know, the adults, but we're all in agreement. That is the amendment.
That was the...
And that's the one that's second. Okay, discussion.
On what he's saying there. You're saying continue update. Continue what kind of an update?
The ones we currently get right now with the city. We get them weekly.
The ones on the internet?
On the internet. We, we are in right now.
Maybe it should say that.
We do it.
Just, uh, we get them daily. Can we get them there? Because I don't get nothing.
Look, hey, 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 let's bring it back. Bring it back. They, uh, they're not scheduled, okay? Republic will make a weekly, they'll make an update when they have something significant, but there's no, you know, and what he's suggesting with his amendment, they continue that process. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Are we all together now on the amendment? Okay, let's discuss it. Any discussion on this amendment? Any? All in, please.
Just when they, you know, when they were putting the welds in and typing it out there, we got updates every day. And then all of a sudden, boom, they quit. So, let's hope that this does bring it back. And I'm gonna support it and vote hard, and hopefully that we can get five votes to pass the resolution. So, uh, but, you know, that seems like they put out, in fact, the incident over the weekend. We didn't get no update on it. We got it from our staff here, from the city administrator and the chief. He's the one that sent us the notification. It didn't, it came from Westlake, our Republic, to the staff here, but not to us as individuals. I think somewhere, we need to notify them that we want to get these staffs a notification.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we're discussing the amendment, please.
Yeah, uh, I'm getting those updates as I send them out, so maybe you are not on the list. I got, uh...
I was gonna say, I got the updates, please.
So, we need to make sure that everybody is on the list.
Well, it's up to the individual, say, hey, look, we can help.
If you go on Republic's website, one of the links to that is to sign up for weekly, or daily updates. And there was an update, as we mentioned on, but they do that all the time. See them every day? Every day I have, I have an update. I'm sure everybody else does, that must have looked, unfortunately, it's on the computer.
Okay, further discussion on the amendment? Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on, we're back to the resolution as amended. Further discussion? Uh, Mr. Satell, your light is on. Okay, thank you. Ms. Eaker?
I'm, I'm sure you are.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Zimmer?
Yeah, I, on the side of five, I, I was involved also in recommending that the word will be taken out and to, to tone it down a little. And I think, you know, I, I agree with what Jerry says, but I think, I think it's okay with the may. The may cause psychological damage, uh, may experience extensive health damage. It's because of may, that it's, just make a point, put it for us. So, I think for the sake of, sake of getting this to pass and where we can all agree on this, I'll vote for it, hard as it is at this point.
Mrs. Norris?
I just wanted, the lawyer, is, is may a good word to use? I mean, is that like, no or yes? I mean, you know, I keep hearing that, you know, we're going to be involved with, you know, it could be possibly in lawsuit that we're, you know, this will be saying that Bridgeton says this, and so we will be responsible. But I would think may is a pretty, you know, invisible word, you know?
So, you want the attorney's thinking?
Yeah.
Okay.
Since this is what I was, an attorney's, attorney's, attorney's example was brought up.
Technically, I don't recognize the attorney.
You know, I'll just, you know, offer this for you to, to reject or whatever. I mean, I don't, hearing what, what various people have said, have concerns about the language. I don't know if the council would reach consensus that some language along the lines of, there are concerns that continued nuisance orders may cause psychological damage, because clearly there are concerns. Bert, it's not, it's less of a factual affirmative statement by the city that those orders in, in the condition of the air may lead to those health issues and psychological problems. I don't know. Throw that out there for your consideration, if that helps you.
Same answer.
Uh, if, if you, if you said something like, at the beginning of that fifth whereas clause, where, whereas, concerns have been raised that the continued nuisance orders may cause them to be responsible.
Concerns?
Let's continue. Mr. Satell, you, you're up next.
I wouldn't mind adopting that, that motion to change, if you get a second on that. That's not a great one.
Well, we'll find out if you want to make a motion.
I'd make a motion to accept that.
Well, let's take a motion.
Concerned of that may.
Concerns have been raised.
Yeah.
I second that.
I actually will support this if you put something like that in there.
So, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Discussion. Uh, Ms. Eaker, are you on the motion to amend?
Um, I could be.
I'll go along with it. Mr. Fedge?
Yeah, I, I just want to get it. Concerns have...
Have been raised.
Have been raised. What, what is that, sir? Been raised?
Well, she has a motion, sir. Please.
No, but I want to make sure I vote for it.
Okay, well, hey, she'll read it for you, sir. Please, Carol.
Whereas concerns have been raised, the continued nuisance orders may cause psychological damage.
Yes, it is. Yes, okay.
Thank you, I got it.
On the motion to amend, I see some lights. Uh, Mr. Zimmer, are you up? Okay, uh, Ms. Eaker?
Yeah, that's, that's fine. Uh, you know, it, it says what we want to say, you know, the best we can with the group we have up here. So, I support that.
Thank you, Mr. Brimmer.
I can look at that, and I can still have some, oh, I have concerns about the language, but again, in the spirit of getting something done, and the money, the legacy, for the people to know that we're trying to do something and support this, I can, I'll compromise, I'll do that.
Thank you, sir. Further discussion? All in favor of that motion to amend? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're back to the resolution as amended. Further discussion? See none? Roll call, vote.
Mrs. Norris?
Aye.
Mr. Satell?
I'd like to thank you, thankfully say aye.
Mr. Zimmer?
Aye.
Ms. Eaker?
Aye.
Mr. Fedge?
Aye.
Mr. Brimmer?
Aye.
Mr. Hein?
Aye.
Seven ayes, it does pass. We're moving on to the next item, item four.